Good evening and welcome to January 28, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is now 7:00 PM. All members are present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first appointment, oh, I'm sorry, Treasury warrants. Transmittal of Treasury warrants 28, 28A, 29, and 29A. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. Loud. Any discussion? Oh, in favor? I'm not unanimous. And on to our first appointment this evening. Looks like our only appointment is with Shawn Neville, Executive Director of WCTV. Ms. Neville, welcome.
Kyra, thank you. Always good to be here in person instead of watching on TV. As you can see from the agenda, there's a few different WCTV-related updates I wanted to kind of get to the board tonight. Some fall under the umbrella of a public viewership, the other one under the umbrella of more procedural and funding-related. So if it's okay with you, we'll just start with the channels. I'll take a pause there if anybody has any questions with that before we move on to the procedural items. So first up, just kind of a relatively big change that happened for our channels at the beginning of the year. For decades, WCTV has had three channels known as public, education, and government. Public was for volunteer productions and things that go on in the community. Education was anything going on in the schools. And then government was all sorts of meetings, and then also programming produced by government officials. So if the town manager's office had a show, if the rec. department had a show, those were government-produced programs. The system wasn't broken per se, but in 2019, we thought that there might be a better way to try to get these sort of programming out to people on a local television station. Surveys showed over the past couple of years that people have a hard time remembering what channel we're on. And between Comcast and Verizon, we have six numbers to throw at people. And so it's often if people ask us what channel, it's just, "What are you looking for?", and then we can guide you in that direction. So it becomes a little complicated for people to remember sometimes what channel certain programming is on. Those same surveys showed that the content people are most interested in is stuff that happens in the community, stuff that happens in the schools, and stuff that happens at Town Hall. And by splitting that up among three different channels, we're kind of taking the content people are most interested in and dividing it up among three different places for them to find it. So this is all about trying to make it easier for people to find the content they're interested in. So at the beginning of the year, we created what is our new main channel. This is going to be Comcast 9, Verizon 37. And this is going to be for something for all Wilmington-centric programming. So whether it's from the community, whether it's from the schools, or whether it's from Town Hall, if it's Wilmington, it's on this channel. It's also where all of our live programming is going to be. So if you're tuning in for a live basketball game, a live meeting, or something live from the common, this is all going to be on one channel. Last year, we had nearly 100 live events on our channel, whether it be meetings, concerts, sports, or community events. So that's our main channel. Our government channel, which is the one you're most familiar with and viewers of this meeting are most familiar with, Comcast 22, Verizon 38, is going to remain largely intact. We rebranded it as WCTV Meetings. Call it what it is. Meetings will kind of run on a loop there throughout the day. And I'll just note that live meetings will also run there. It'll kind of simulcast on both channels so people know where they are. We know meetings are the most important thing for people, and we want to make sure if people are tuning into us for a meeting, they don't miss it. Our third channel, Comcast 99, Verizon 39, is now known as WCTV Access. This is more of a traditional public access station. This is something where volunteer productions have their usual time slots, where a lot of the church services have their regular time slots and will be repeated throughout the week. And also content that's not from Wilmington. So the district attorney occasionally does a show. We get some stuff from the State House, NASA programming. We do TED Talks multiple times throughout the week. All this is going to air on this channel. So that's the channel piece of tonight's talk. We spent a lot of time discussing this as a station with the board and the staff to try to figure this out before we pulled the trigger on this, but we feel like this is the best way to kind of deliver the content to a television audience right now. And certainly, welcome to feedback and changes in this in the future, but this is something that we so far have good reception so far. So any questions on that before I move into kind of more procedural stuff?
Everybody else here?
Got it. So next up is funding. And just kind of a reminder for everybody at home, the WCTV isn't funded through tax dollars. We're funded through license agreements with the cable companies. Federal law allows municipalities to request up to 5% of cable TV revenue from cable providers when they come into town. And that's what Wilmington currently does with Comcast and Verizon, not internet revenue, but cable TV revenue. And it's been this way, this funding model's existed for 30-plus years. And on this, just two items to relay to the board as the licensing authority here. The first is that the FCC is deciding whether to change the rules when it comes to that 5% number. Without getting too far into the weeds, the cable industry wants to declare in-kind services that it gives to the town and then deduct those from its quarterly payments to the town. And so we're still waiting to hear exactly what this is. The FCC hasn't ruled on this yet. The government shutdown has slowed things down there a little bit. But to kind of give a worst-case scenario of what people are talking about is what if the cable companies could say the three TV channels we're giving to Wilmington, those have a certain cost. So we're going to deduct the cost of running three TV channels from the payments to the town. That's an in-kind service that we give to the town. That's a worst case. Something that we've seen in the documents that we think is something they definitely will go after is the free cable drops, which are offered at municipal buildings around town. Dozens of free cable drops are offered as part of the license agreements with Comcast and Verizon. Evidence suggests that they will try to deduct some of those costs for free cable from their monetary obligation from us. So don't know yet, but that's what the evidence is starting to suggest. I can tell from the last negotiation we had with Comcast, it was kind of an afterthought. These have been in the license agreements for years. They've just been in the back there and haven't been given much thought. I'm not sure how much the town uses them, but something that we may have to look at going forward if Comcast and Verizon declare something related to these. So I just want to make you aware this is coming. This is going through the, the town may have to have some dialogue in the coming months with the cable companies to see what they prepare, plan on declaring as in-kind services. And then we may have to look into the contracts and see, you know, what might be able to be taken out or what needs to be kept and how this moves forward. We're the beneficiary of this license agreement, so we're not a party, so we're not the one to be making those phone calls. And I guess that kind of takes me to my next point, which is that the Massachusetts Department of Revenue has recently said that WCTV can no longer receive direct funding from the cable companies as part of those license agreements. And so again, for decades, the town has designated WCTV as the recipient of these funds. It's run that way in a lot of towns. The DOR now says that the law can't let that happen, that we are not a party of that contract. The money must first go to the town before it can come to WCTV. And so I met last week with Kerry. We met with Mike Morris to kind of talk about what that means for us and what it means going forward. And what we came up with is creating a revolving account for these funds to go into before they get passed along to WCTV. It's kind of just a step to get the money where it's supposed to go. The money is in the license agreement for public access television. It can't be redirected anywhere else anyways, but there needs to be kind of a procedural hurdle to get it there now. So that requires a town meeting vote, so we'll be back in the next couple of months, or that'll show up on the warrant in the next couple of months to establish that revolving account and then set some limits on it. But it's hopeful from my perspective that it's just a procedural move going forward. So with that, I'll just close. You know, that we continue to try to work to make things, programming available to everyone in the community, whether it's on TV, online, through our app, through social media. Our totals last year, we were platformed for more than 500 unique pieces of content, whether that be from staff, our youth program, volunteers, our interns. And so just, you know, 10 videos a week or podcasts a week coming out of WCTV. There's a lot of great community content going on in this town. Cable television habits are changing, and we're trying to keep up with those. We've seen over the past couple of years, people are cutting the cord. Cable subscriptions in Wilmington are down a couple hundred over the last couple of years. Not certainly a monumental shift in viewership habits, but I think we all know from seeing ads on TV about cutting the cord that this is happening for people. And certainly something that we as an organization that is dependent on cable subscriptions, we're looking at that in the long term and trying to figure that out and just to make everyone aware of that as well, that this is something that is going to be happening at some point in the future as more people elect to maybe go to a streaming service rather than traditional cable. So with that, I'll open it up. Any questions you might have?
Thank you, Shawn. Appreciate your comments. Any, yes, Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shawn, thanks very much for being here. Thanks for the presentation. Just another example of how you guys are always trying to find new creative ways to provide a better service for residents here in the town. So really appreciate the rearranging of the channels, although it'll probably admittedly take a little time for me to, you know, I'm always on 22, so I'll have to switch to 9, but I'll get used to it. And really appreciate it. I mean, it's awesome what you guys do for our community. You know, I think you guys really have taken leaps and bounds the last couple of years, especially with your social media as well, the replay, the high-definition replay you guys have online. You know, I know in my family, my parents spend a lot of time in Florida, so they watch that replay every other week, and that's why I'm on my best behavior, because I'll hear about it if not. But certainly, really appreciate that. And then the outreach you do with the students. I know you spent some time with the students over at Shawshing Tech early last week, and that was awesome. Talking to them this week, they really enjoyed it. So you're really trying to hit something for everybody, so really appreciate that. And certainly, we support you and your endeavors, and thanks so much for all you do for our town.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shawn, I can honestly say you do a great job. And there's no question, WCTV is way ahead of the pack compared to other communities when it comes to community television. There's no question about it. Even in the election coverage, you were far superior than Tewksbury. I mean, they're way behind. Obviously, they're trying to catch up to us. I hope they try to anyway. But I just want to say, not only you, but you've got a great staff that works there. And a lot of volunteerism. I see Jim Buckley in the audience, who volunteers a lot of time. Those two guys behind, we can't really see them that well, but those guys back there, hello? They always, they're there every weekend. Is this my good side? All right. But anyway, I just want to let you know that you guys do a great job, and volunteerism's at its best, and you do have staff, and everyone's a great job, and it reflects on what you do and what they do. Great job.
Just briefly, thank you for coming, Mr. Neville. I do think to kind of belabor the point made by my colleagues that you've done, you and your staff and volunteers have done a great job of really making WCTV representative of the community. And I applaud you for your outreach efforts with the social media and with also opening up the building too, because I think you've turned the local cable access station into really a, I guess, a virtual and also physical community center. So well done, Mr. Neville.
Yeah, I have to agree with my colleagues. Shawn, you do a great job. Your whole volunteer, your whole team does a great job representing the town of Wilmington. And I agree with what was said earlier, that you guys are above and beyond what has been done in other communities. So keep up the good work, and thank you for being here today and keeping us informed. And if we can help get you through the hurdles of this FCC, we'll definitely be helping you out there. Thank you.
I echo my colleagues' comments, and you just have wonderful programming, something for everybody. It's top-notch, professional, I mean, it's everything. And the volunteers that you have are great and committed to providing, you know, access to the community. And it's really appreciated.
Always looking for more too. If anybody wants to find out, just give us a call.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
And I believe you have an open house, another one coming up? You guys often do that?
Yeah.
We have a meeting that night, but I want to plug it for the community.
Yeah, yeah. So we're doing something, actually, it's going to be up at the library. We wanted to kind of take our open house on the road. And so on February 11th, we're going to have an event up at the library, just for people to meet our team and learn more about the station, see some of our equipment. And so it's a little traveling open house, and then we can arrange for a studio tour at a later point. But we're open six days a week, and so anybody that wants to stop by can always just give us a call and set up an appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Communications, Mr. Hump.
Yes, the recently members of the Board of Selectmen and myself and the Assistant Town Manager attended the Massachusetts Municipal Association's annual meeting in Boston, and there were a number of topics that were discussed. And out of that, I know a couple of the members of the board spoke to me about the prospect of establishing town email accounts for each member of the board. Currently, as it stands, members of the board are using personal email addresses for communication, and so I wanted to bring that to the board this evening. I have talked to our IT director. That's certainly an option that the town can pursue. And the way this would essentially happen is that each individual member would have its own email address. It would be your first initial last name, and then @wilmingtonma.gov. And that is subject to the board's direction on that. We can do that fairly readily. Next, under Correspondence is Communication from Selectman Eaton with respect to the Brave Act and Veterans Tax Abatements. There's a number of different abatements that he has outlined in this summary that apply to veterans. I won't go into them all. I've had some conversations with the assessor, Karen Rassus, and from my perspective, the one that I think the board should consider is the first one that's listed here, which is MGL Chapter 41, 59, Section 5 with regard to allowing for adjustments in the benefit based upon the Consumer Price Index. And this is something that we are looking to place on the warrant for town meeting to consider. Next is Correspondence to Bureau Ram. You'll recall at the last Selectmen's meeting, Mr. Ram came in with respect to his business operations at Michael's Place. There was some follow-up associated. He did confirm, and the letter reflects the conversation that took place that evening, that he is the manager of the organization, that he is at that location throughout the week with the exception of Mondays when the restaurant is closed. And it also noted some different follow-up work that he needed to do, including fingerprinting, which is a requirement of our inhabitant bylaws. There was also a couple of issues associated with his building that he needed to address. This letter, essentially, he is in compliance with the fingerprinting requirement. There was an issue associated with vents that needed to be addressed, which has been to the satisfaction of the fire department. And I was informed today by the building inspector that issues associated with the emergency lighting have been addressed. So at this point, it appears he is in compliance. This next letter is directed to Michael Kenley, the Secretary of the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. You'll recall the town received notice through, from Senator Bruce Tar's office, that he had made efforts in the spring, early summer, to include in an economic bond bill $1 million for improvements to the commuter rail station at North Wilmington. And also was able to get earmarked in that bond bill $250,000 to be expended for economic development along the Route 38 corridor. So there's a number of different requests that have been made from representatives and senators across the state. At this point in time, the governor will be putting together his 2020 to 2024 capital plan. And this letter basically strongly encourages that the secretary speak with the governor and encourage him to include these projects in that five-year bond bill. Clearly, in terms of North Wilmington, the prospect of improving the platform so that it's handicapped accessible and allows for the trains to continue on beyond the roadway when dropping off and picking up passengers is very important for us in terms of emergency response. And then in terms of the $250,000 for economic development, I think this would go a long way towards helping us with efforts to reinvigorate and further bolster the activity that's going on on Route 38. Next, under Correspondence is a letter from Shonda Green. This is from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. She is notifying us that the Verizon cable license, which was a 15-year license, it was their first license as a cable provider, that license expires on February 25 of 2022. And as such, the town needs to go through a process that's officially called ascertainment, but essentially what it is, is reviewing the services that Verizon has provided as a cable provider and negotiating a new cable license. This process typically takes 30 to 36 months, about three years. And we will, we have a cable TV advisory committee. There's, you'll see later on in the agenda here, an appointment to be made, but that group will begin meeting again, and there's a legal process that needs to take place to get to a point where that committee will come back to the Board of Selectmen with the recommended terms of a new license. In this case, because the license is a renewal, it will be for 10 years going forward. We have correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. This is highlighting points that the governor made in presenting his budget for 2020. It's a $42.7 billion budget. Some of the highlights, essentially, a $29.7 million increase in unrestricted general government aid, or this is aid that comes to the cities and towns for general purposes. Also, there's a, he's recommending an increase of $20 per student under Chapter 70. Chapter 70 is the aid that goes for education in the students across the Commonwealth. There'll be, I'm sure, a lot of discussion going forward. Certainly, both the House and the Senate will present their own expectations in terms of what the funding will be. Clearly, we pay close attention to this because ultimately, local aid is a key part of the town's revenue stream for the services that we offer. We have correspondence from Xfinity. As you know, we periodically get these notices advising us of channel changes. In this particular case, it's noted that the particular channels, Star India, apparently is no longer offering a variety of different programs or channels to Comcast. So as a consequence, they're notifying the town, they also send out notice to their subscribers, and this correspondence reflects changes in the pricing, actually reductions in pricing because of the fact that these programs will no longer be offered. All right. Next, under Correspondence is a correspondence dated January 22, 2019, from a number of different residents in town representing themselves as a concerned citizens. It was received in our office on January 23. There are a number of different demands in this letter. First, looking for...
Before, Mr. Hump, before you get into that, I would like to make a statement. So we did receive that letter that was emailed out to the board last Wednesday. It was signed by 21 residents that do make a series of requests, most of which involve participation in Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman Dan Veerman in previous and anticipated hearings related to the application filed by Bering LLC relative to the property at 362 Middlesex Avenue. Upon receiving the letter in anticipation that the substance of which would be discussed during tonight's meeting, and in an abundance of caution, I did reach out to the State Ethics Commission for an opinion as to whether my prior professional relationship with Attorney Veerman would constitute a conduct which would cause a reasonable person to conclude that a conflict existed. I have been advised that participating in discussion relating to this letter would constitute a conflict as defined by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 23B3. Accordingly, I will now leave the room for the duration of this discussion and ask that the Recording Secretary note my recusal and absence in the minutes, and further note when I return following discussion for the next agenda item. I will briefly highlight for the purpose of clarity that Attorney Veerman was reappointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals on Monday, April 23, 2018, five days prior to my election to this board on April 28, 2018. Should I remain on this board when his term expires and were he to seek reappointment, I would of course recuse myself from that discussion and decision as I am doing so tonight so as to avoid any conflict. I ask that one of my colleagues retrieve me from the manager's office upon the moving out of the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Mr. Hump, continue.
Sure. So with respect to this correspondence, the first item that is requested here is that Dan Veerman, Chairman of the Board of Appeals voluntarily recues himself from any future involvement in the proposed Substance Abuse Detox Center based upon comments that he made in 2017. Then it goes on to note, if Mr. Veerman declines to recuse himself, the correspondence is seeking to have the Selectmen called upon to obtain an opinion from Town Council as to the process to bar Mr. Veerman from any participation in future actions related to this proposal. As an alternative to barring Mr. Veerman from acting on the issues associated with the detox center, the signers of this letter are seeking that the board remove him from the Board of Appeals. There's also a demand that the Board of Appeals not make any so-called reasonable accommodations as requested by the attorney representing Bering LLC. There's a number of other points that are made in demands, including a suggestion that a complaint will be filed with the State Ethics Commission if Chairman Kyra does not instruct the board to vote on these demands.
Thank you. It's my expectation, my expectation is that many people here in the audience this evening are here in regard to this January 22 letter that was sent to the Board of Selectmen. Town Council has advised that the Board of Appeals is an autonomous board and that the Board of Selectmen has no statutory authority to prohibit a member of the Board of Appeals from participating in meetings conducted under the authority of that board as is requested in Point 2 of the January 22 letter. On January 22, the January 22 letter requests that the Selectmen remove Mr. Daniel Veerman from the Board of Appeals based upon remarks he was quoted as making over a year ago prior to his most recent reappointment. The letter makes complaints against Mr. Veerman and seeks his discipline and dismissal as an appointee of the Zoning Board of Appeals. As explained to me by Town Council, it is standard, appropriate, and lawful for such complaints to be considered, if at all, in executive session as such matters may impact the civil rights of the individual in question. Notice of an executive session to consider these matters must be provided to Mr. Veerman at least 48 hours prior to the date and time of the meeting, and he and his representative have a right to attend that executive session. During the executive session, Selectmen may discuss the complaints contained in the January 22 letter and seek to receive information related to the allegations. Mr. Veerman has a legal right to speak on his behalf to the board. The board is under no obligation to hold an executive session if it does not consider the complaints to merit further review. In such, an executive session is held. Board members may decide whether to vote to hold a public hearing at a future date to consider whether there is cause to remove Mr. Veerman from the Board of Appeals pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 12. I will place on the Selectmen's February 11 agenda the topic of entering executive session for the purpose of discussing the complaints and matters referenced in the January 22 letter. I strongly encourage my... I strongly encourage my fellow board members not to discuss the specific allegations this evening as Mr. Veerman is not present and the board runs risk of violating Mr. Veerman's civil rights. If board members have questions about the legal process for considering the allegations against Mr. Veerman, you should direct those questions through the Chair to Town Council. My expectation is that under public comments, members of the audience may wish to express an opinion and offer comments on this matter. Members of the audience will be permitted to do so. You should exercise civility and be respectful with your remarks. Your comments will be noted, but no response will be provided by members of the board to any remarks about this matter. Okay? You want to get Mr. Eaton and we can move on?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So on February 11th, is that when we're going to decide if we're going to go further with this?
Correct. On February 11th, we'll have a, we'll have a, an executive session.
Okay. And then will that be the time when we decide if it's going to be brought out to the public?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you call Mr. Eaton, I just want to make a comment real quick. Back in fall of 2017, I contacted the State Ethics Commission. Obviously, I was the author of Article 2. I answered all their questions. I answered their questionnaire. And the bottom line is, as long as I don't have a financial interest, nor am I a director butter, that I could participate in any way relative to 362 as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I want to make that very clear. So there's no bias on my part at all, cleared by the State Ethics, and I can act as a full member relative to 362. And I'm not going to make any comment. I'm glad to see that we are going to have an executive session. I believe it's warranted. That's all I'm going to say right now at the moment. I'm glad we're going to have an executive session to discuss it. I believe it's warranted. Thank you.
Onto...
I would just clarify that the, as I understand it, the, the topic of a consideration of an executive session will be on the agenda for February 11th. Ultimately, the board members will have to make a decision as to whether the information that you have before you merits having an executive session.
Correct.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, when I listen to Town Council, I don't want anyone to think out there I'm going to violate anyone's civil rights, and I'll say it again. I truly believe this warrants an executive session. That's all I'm going to say. I really believe that. Thank you. And I'm glad to see you're going to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a procedural question, just so I'm clear. So on February 11th, we'll take a vote as whether we're going to go into executive session at a future date? Is that correct?
We'll take a vote to go into executive session on that day.
We can go right, directly into it though?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought you had to take the vote tonight to go into it on the line.
Okay. We're on to...
I'll get Mr. Eaton.
Yep.
The first item on a Board to Consider is just the issue of whether or not the board members wish to direct me to make arrangements for each member to have an individual email account through the town.
Yeah, when we were at the MMA conference, specifically at the Open Meeting Law, a number of, I'd say, almost 100% of the boards have, their town officials have separate email accounts. And I thought that that was an inappropriate thing to do for this board. I believe school committee has their own as well, right? They have their own, school committee has their own email accounts?
We do.
Yeah. So we would need a formal vote to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the, we instruct the manager to create email accounts for each of the Selectmen.
Motion made by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion?
Just more for, I guess, process. Do we contact Mr. O'Neill to schedule a time to have that set up?
No, I will, I will take care of that.
Okay.
Any idea of a timeline?
I think it can be done within the next, you know, by the end of the week.
All set? All those in favor? Announce. Thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, follow-up from the discussions earlier about cable and the ascertainment process. Historically, the Assistant Town Manager has served as one of the members of the task force, and I'm recommending that this evening that the board appoint our Assistant Town Manager to that post.
Okay, is there some of motion? Mr. Eaton, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All in favor? I'll let you announce.
Next, under Board to Consider, a request from Samantha Reeve, Health and Recovery Coordinator, on behalf of the Substance Abuse Coalition. A few different requests here, one being to use the town common in the gazebo for a candlelight vigil on Sunday, September 29, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Also to place signs and banners throughout Wilmington. And then, third, that the Wilmington Town Common be illuminated in purple during the month of September in observance of National Recovery Month. I would just, I certainly recommend approval of this. We've checked the dates. There's no conflicts. Just a couple of points, as has been the practice in, you know, prior instances where groups have looked to put signage up on the town common, my recommendation would be that two signs on either side of the common and that signs be permitted on town properties during the month of September.
Okay. Mr. Bendel, Mr. Eaton, you want to do it again?
No.
It's like a ping pong.
So, so...
Oh, Mr. Loud. Mr. Loud makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Bendel, any discussion? All in favor? I'll let you announce.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a request from the Wilmington Sons of Italy to conduct an antique and collector's car show at the Town Common parking lot on Sunday, July 28, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, we've checked with various groups that may have events, and there are no conflicts.
There are motion.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Loud, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? I'll let you announce. That's it for Board to Consider.
Yes.
Okay, public comments. Under public comments, I'm going to establish some ground rules, seeing as there's so many people here that may want the opportunity to speak and articulate your words in a manner of civility and respect for everybody. And we're going to limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments will not exceed 90 minutes, so it would be an hour and a half. You will be allowed to speak once. If time permits, and there's still time within that hour and a half timeframe, you can certainly speak for another three minutes. But that will only be after everybody has that opportunity to speak. Does anybody, and we also want you to identify yourself and your address. Public comments, anybody? Yes?
Rob Fasulo, 28 Marjory Road. In the interest of civility, I wanted to thank Selectmen Log. I really wasn't able to stomach what he had said while I was here last week with regards to my question on who gave the direction to Town Council to not attend the first 362 Middlesex. So thank you. I appreciate those comments. When we left here last week, I, we were talking about 10 emails that were being withheld from public purview under the auspices of Attorney Client Privilege. You guys said you were going to look into it. Two days after you said that you were going to look into it, the town blanket covered an entire email server from, as Attorney Client Privilege, resulting in the dismissal of the appeal from the Secretary of State's office. So really not, in my opinion, that's, that's not an appropriate way to be a transparent form of government. With respect to the town, a week later, they did a reversal, and I did get some of what I had asked for, and a couple of things I wanted to bring up. First of all, you guys talked about the emails here today for the boards. I was surprised to find out the ZBA is using, and I'm sure other departments are, I'm just saying the ZBA, is using private email addresses for town business. Part of being transparent is that we need to be able to access those if we request it. By law, those requests are public record, and they're ours on this side of the table. When they're on a private email server, we've learned our lesson with the last presidential election where those emails go. So all boards should be, be using town emails. Even at the state level, we're not able to use private emails. So the town's going to get on the ball with this and, and put everybody under a town server. If not for the public records rules, that's number one. And number two, it's our jobs out here to make sure you guys are doing things legally. And to find out now that there's a second board member on the ZBA that's got a conflict, and I'm not going to mention the names, I'm sure Mr. Hall knows, the public should have been made aware of that. And I guess I would like to ask, why, why was that not told to us that there's a second member on that board that has a conflict that was reported to you guys?
Thank you. Is that, and for your comments? Yeah, we can take up those questions under New Business. I just want to get through the comment, through the public. You all set? Okay. Yes? Please identify yourself.
As I read the agenda before I came to the meeting...
Could you please identify yourself and your address?
Kevin McDonald, just say Planet Earth, so I think I'll leave my address out. What I'd like to talk about is the fact that, Mr. Chairman, you're the person who sets the agenda. And when I look at the agendas that have been set, I see things on the agenda that are very, very less important than other things. And one of the things that I propose was the town taking a proactive step with regard to the Detox Center in trying to negotiate with the owner to have some type of alternative development there. I personally propose that there be a train station with an eatery and some housing for senior citizens and veterans. And so my question is, would you be willing, Mr. Chairman, to put an agenda item the next meeting to have the town pursue negotiations with the property owner for an alternative development there? And I'll take a step further in adding a concern of mine. Where it's a detox center, where there is no sewer servicing the property, these people come in there with substances that are killing people. When these people die of these toxic substances, we're even hearing reports of mothers cleaning up after their children dying and the mothers dying themselves. It's also been reported that there have been requests put into the state police to have canine units go and search for fentanyl suspects and other type of drug suspects, and the state police refused that request because even the canines are dying. And so if these substances are so toxic that mothers are dying, and the state police rejects requests to have canine units search for units like that, it's my feeling that these harmful toxins getting deposited into a septic system, which is going to possibly pollute the groundwater and the aquifer, warrants a closer look by the board into this matter. And I really hope the board, maybe somebody could put forth a motion tonight to have the board have an agenda item for discussion and town input to see if we can have some type of negotiation with the developer to sweeten some type of deal that he will back off having a detox center and offer him some type of expedited permitting or some type of friendly development that's more desirable for the town. And even the money that was, that's slated for the North Wilmington Train Station be used in conjunction with a platform so the train doesn't block 62 and a sewer line to service the project.
Thank you for your comments.
So I guess my, I guess it's a comment, but it's also a question.
Mr. McDonald, thank you for your comments. I want to move on. And you can come back, and you can discuss further after everybody has their opportunities. Appreciate it. Yes?
Jim Buckley, 6500. Could you just explain that executive session procedure? Is there going to be an executive session, or you're going to see if it's warranted?
There's a scheduled executive session on February 11th, and the board will take a vote to go into executive session.
Just to look and see if it's warranted, but it isn't warranted.
Yeah, the vote, the board will take a vote to go into executive session if it's warranted to go into executive session.
So it might not happen.
Well, we'll meet on February 11th and take that vote to go into executive session. Yes?
MJ Burns, 9500, to speak to the matter of correspondence for the February 11th meeting. I guess it goes unsaid, as being a volunteer as well, that the transparency and the unbiased of our boards are vital in the operations of our municipality and in our government. In light of that, there are some social media posts by the Chair of the Zoning Board for Appeals that drives the question of his inability to be unbiased in this situation. And it's clear from that response...
Mr. Chair, I understand.
Yes.
I'm feeling I might be making...
Sorry.
Okay.
It's okay, Mr. Buckley.
As a matter of, sorry, matter of additional consideration, that too should come before the Board of Selectmen as a part of the discussion for the executive session. So I, I'd be happy to supply what I, some photo shots that I, that I've been emailed of that correspondence, but I think it certainly, as Mr. McCoy referenced, it does warrant an executive session and a serious conversation, not in this situation, but in the grander scheme of things as to how social media plays with the way that we operate our, you know, handle our decisions and our, how we run within our positions that we sit for, for this town. So...
Definitely. And part of my comment was that we would look into those allegations, so you can certainly provide those to the board.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, in the back first.
To Julis Road, just curious how the vote's going to go next week? You know, majority vote? Is it one vote? I mean, the other day, you know, we won the ZBA vote, of course, but the next vote is going to be majority vote. I don't understand why it would change, but I guess that's the way it is. But now how would this vote go next February 11th?
To go into executive session?
Is it one vote? Is it two votes?
It's a majority vote.
So what happens now with this guy, if I want out, it's going to be just the four years?
It would be the four.
And what happens to two?
Two and two would be lack of failure to go into executive session. I don't know that that would happen, but...
So a tie, we lose?
Right. I mean, well, you don't lose, but it doesn't go into executive session.
All the votes are always against us. I don't get it.
That's the answer to the question.
Is that actually legal? I mean, that's what you're saying, two to two is, or you're just guessing?
No, that's my understanding. Is that correct? We have a...
Two to two with a...
Yes, Mr. Eaton, were you done?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Great question, Virchey Road. Two questions. One, where there appears to be no movement to build a, any type of a town hall slash town hall school administration type thing, have you guys looked at possibly, you know, getting an assessment of what the Roman House needs? Because all of a sudden, you know, we've put a new roof on it, or a partial roof on it, I think it was, this past year, and instead of having the building just... And instead of having the building just kind of be neglected, is it possible to get a kind of an assessment of what the building needs from the building superintendent, going to the building inspector, and maybe see if some of that work can be done? If it's extensive work to be phased in, you know, in one, two, three years? Just because, you know, it's just, it's a shame to see it slowly becoming an ice hole and I would hate to see, you know, it just gets to the point that with, like, several of the buildings in town, that hey, it costs more to fix it than to repair it than to knock it down, so knock it down where it seems like that's gonna be our school administration building probably for the foreseeable future. So, I don't know if you guys had any thoughts on that? And then I have one other topic.
Okay. What's the other topic?
We had, as you know, we had Valerie Gindrich in here a couple of weeks ago talking about the inclusionary bylaw and the whole idea of it being 15 percent. And I don't, I'll belabor that discussion, but she made a comment that she said that's one of the tools that's in our quote toolbox. That would help us, you know, vend off, you know, possible FDB or get more type inclusionary affordable type housing into the town. And what I'm thinking is, is that at some point before town meeting, should you folks have her come in again and say, what are some of the other tools? So, that would imagine that there's, you know, there's other things that either we are thinking of maybe as a community, you know, within the various rooms here at Town Hall, or things that we should be thinking of. And that would give us a better understanding of whether we do vote at town meetings. When we do vote at town meeting, we'll have, you know, some better answers as to what are some of the other tools and maybe, maybe we can include some of these other tools within the next several years.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to, yes, ma'am?
My name is Gianna Sawyer. I live at 58 Long Street. And what I'd like to ask is, you're saying that you'll vote on whether or not it warrants to go into executive session on February 11th. And the next Board of Appeals meeting, when they're going to be taking up the special conditions proposed by the Veteran LLC, is on February 13th. And they have to be given 48 hours notice of anything. So, I'm not sure if you do go into executive session on February 11th, if that will affect that meeting at all. And I mean, and I...
I don't need to cut you off. I believe the next ZBA meeting is the 27th.
It's the one on the 13th. Is one on the 13th. Discuss the decision to up the... On the 27th, is I hearing too?
Okay.
Oh, the 27th is the reasonable accommodations, but the 13th is also a zoning board meeting? I'm gonna... Well, I'll have to look that up. I'm not sure which is on the agenda.
It is the 13th.
The 13th. The 13th. So, I know you have a meeting on the 4th. Is there a particular reason why you can't take up the consideration of executive session on your regularly scheduled meeting on February 4th instead of pushing it to the 11th?
The February 4th meeting is an extraordinary type of meeting for the presentation of the budget only. The 11th is the regular, regular board meeting. So, that's why I schedule it for the 11th. Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes?
Mrs. Zoe Sol, 62 Long Street. Mr. Chairman, I have to ask you, I give Jonathan a lot of credit for disclosing his conflict of interest, and I have to ask you, Mr. Chairman, do you have any conflicts of interest? Do you have a family member that's involved with Veteran LLC, with the developer of that property, or that has been involved in any way, shape, or form with the detox?
I do not.
You do not have a family member that's been involved with the detox? Or that is, or that is consulting for the owner of that property?
Regarding detox, I do not have a relative that's dealing with the detox.
Well, I'm pretty sure that when the detox came forward, you did have a relative that went forward, that was working for them.
At the time, in 2017, my brother, who's a former town manager, volunteered to have a group on a, come in to make a presentation regarding a detox. I don't know that this is the same thing. He's not involved in it now.
We've been told before that Mr. David Ray was no longer involved, but yet he is. So, you know, there's things going on behind the scenes and, you know, the way that since, you know, it's been so secretive about emails and the town not wanting to release information into the public and things like that. I mean, you can't wait for one for wondering whether or not that there's still stuff going on behind the scenes because see, part of the, part of the reasons why we have, you know, the information request is for transparency so that the public can actually trust the government. But when the government doesn't want to disclose information to the public, therefore mistrust sets in, and that's where you don't have respect. So, the respect works both ways, not just from on this side of the aisle, but on that side of the aisle too. Because we still haven't received, it took us three months to get information out of this town hall. And we found out that through that information that there was some disclosure that one of the Board of Appeals members who actually voted on their project had a conflict of interest and did not disclose it to our understanding, to our knowledge at all, to the public and to the meeting, and was supposed to disclose it to this board and did not. And now, that's why I'm asking you, Mr. Chairman, because if we find out that there is any reason that you would have a conflict and you're saying that you don't, then maybe you should recuse yourself too. Maybe you ought to ask, say, whether you should be participating in this conversation.
I'm filing a 23B for disclosure, so that will show that I have no conflict of interest. Thank you for your comments.
You don't qualify for a 23B.
Wow. Anybody else wish to speak?
My three minutes is up.
No, you got another minute. Go ahead.
Is a 23B public information?
Yes.
Oh, I'll make a request of that because we didn't get that in our information request either. I'd also like to know what the status is for Sharapis Farm. From my understanding, there was discussion. I mean, you guys discussed about, you know, putting money aside to have an assessment down on that property. You had an executive session at your last meeting, and I'd like to know what an update of that and whether or not the assessment was down on the property? And if it was, what it was assessed at? And just one other thing, wait, can we expect responses to all this?
We'll take it up on the new business. Next. Yes?
Ethan Sawyer, 58 Long Street. I just wanted to clarify one thing, the letter from the citizens that you had read part of. I've also read it. It says, it didn't, you said that we requested to not make reasonable accommodations, but that's not exactly what it was. It was to not entertain the reasonable accommodation request until all of this was sorted out and also specifically until the town was able to develop some sort of protocol for how to approach reasonable accommodations. I don't think that there is one that currently exists. I'm not sure if anyone knows that. But a lot of towns, the ADA has recommended that they put into place, you know, some sort of protocol, standard procedure for how to address those types of requests. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And I think another reason that would sort of support the request for the ZBA to delay their decision, you know, has to do with simply timelines, you know? So, the executive session that you hold, we understand that you can't do that until, I guess, February 11th, you know? And then it really kind of cuts the timeframe short to actually be able to accomplish anything prior to that vote. And, you know, I think that if you were able to talk with town council about that during the executive session, just to ensure that, you know, this isn't only to sort of appease us, you know, that something could actually happen. And I don't know if, based on the time constraints that are in place, that anything could actually happen, even if you decided to move forward without delaying the reasonable accommodations, which we're not saying you shouldn't make, but we don't know how to make them. I don't think the town knows how to make them yet. And then, you know, I did also just want to sort of state one key point was, of that letter was, I know that Mr. Veerman has said that he has also contacted the State Ethics Commission. He's been approved. I haven't seen it, but assuming that that's true, you know, the request that we're making really doesn't have to do with any state law or the State Ethics Commission. It has to do with what the applicant is just now requesting under federal law, you know, protections under the ADA and his comments. Because the, you know, the comments that he had made certainly could be perceived, at least in my mind, a lot differently under federal law having to do with discrimination than state law having to do with conflict of interest. So, I just wanted to sort of clarify that for, I guess, the board when you go into the Yeah, and then I guess the only other comment that I had was about the email addresses. It sounded like you were gonna discuss it for this board, but I think it would be a good idea for all the boards, you know, makes sense. That was it.
Thank you. There's someone, yes, sir?
Jeff Wood, 18 Frederick Drive. Back when the chairman of the zoning board of appeals asked for a second or whatever, a next five-year term, did you check with town council to find out what the town's exposure would be to his public comments if the applicant did not get the permit from the zoning board and went forward with a lawsuit?
Did we check with town council on the exposure?
Right. What would the town's exposure be having our chairman of the zoning board with the public comments that he had made in the previous year?
Anything else?
Also, what was the vote of the board of selectmen on his five-year term?
Is that it? For your public comments? Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on public comments before anybody takes a second shot at it? Anybody else wishes to speak? Okay, Mr. McDonald, I saw your hand up first.
I just wanted, the gentleman I find, are you from town council? I could just ask a question of you.
You'd have to ask it through the board.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. If the town council can correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that the folks, the proponents of the detox center who failed to gain a two-thirds vote of the Board of Appeals are appealing based upon the fact that federal law of the American, Americans with Disabilities Act can provide somebody who is proposing a detox center to override local zoning? And can you just speak to us a little bit about the legality of that, if that is in fact true? And if the town has any type of defense based on highly toxic chemicals going into a groundwater system, septic system?
Okay. Is there anything else you have?
Yeah. Do you want me to ask it now or do you want me to just wait?
Yeah, I'm giving you three minutes for public comments.
I asked if the board would be willing to put forth an agenda item to have the town enter into some type of friendly negotiation with the developer for an alternative development. And so, my question is, would anybody on this board be willing to put forth a motion to put that on for an agenda item so that maybe we could have an alternative development rather than a detox center in having our groundwater threatened by these toxic chemicals going into the system?
Thank you. That it for public comments?
Yeah, but that's a question. Would you be willing to?
You're all set? Okay. Ms. Burns?
I don't think I spoke yet.
Yeah, that's what I had asked if anybody had. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Kelly Richards. I live at 31 Shady Lane Drive. Just curious about like the logistics of the executive session. So, I believe you mentioned that Veerman would need to be here with his legal counsel?
Or his representative.
Or his representative. So, does that mean that automatically he is going to be attending that meeting with his legal counsel in the event that you go into executive session?
As I had stated with my previous comments with direction from council, yes, he would be eligible to attend as well as us receiving additional information as Ms. Burns had, Ms. Burns had said that she would provide the board.
Oh, just wanted to make sure that, you know, if he attended, that he would be here with his legal counsel for when the vote goes to executive session so that he is prepared for that meeting. On February 11th, right, at that time.
Yeah, he has to receive notification. So, we don't, so we don't circumvent or have an issue with civil rights on his rights.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, then I'll go to Ms. Burns first.
Just to speak to the email, I think it's great that selectmen are getting their own email through the town. I do caution though, your private emails are still, are still under open meeting law because you've done business on them, so they're not totally closed off. But I think that's a great, and I think it does make it a lot easier and someone who's gone through it for transparency sake, I think that's a great idea to have a board with doing so. So, I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Yes?
Me?
Yes?
Rob Fasulo, 28 Marjory Road. I just want to, I want to state for the record more for people out here, Mr. Chairman, your brother appeared for the applicant in September of 17. And I'm, I've got right here, if you want to take a look at it, ZBA minutes where your brother also appeared representing the same applicant, Dalaquin LLC. So, there is a financial relationship that your brother has with this developer. And I don't think you qualify for a Form 23. I think you qualify for a 19. But you, I'm sorry, there's a conflict there.
Thank you. Yes.
Just one other quick issue to bring up. If, if the, this goes to the accommodation on the 27th and the Board of Appeals votes three to two in favor of the accommodation, I want to know whether or not the Board of Appeals members who voted for the special permit get the right for counsel and to defend that vote. And I want to know what vote is counsel gonna defend? Is counsel gonna defend a three to two vote or the two to three vote? And maybe the Board of Appeals needs to have special counsel. Because you have a conflict between a board, you know, it's being ripped apart in half, you know, whose vote is the more important vote? What vote is the vote that stands up to the law? Is it the special permit vote or is it the accommodation vote? And I don't think there's any case law on it unless someone can point to case law on it, because I certainly looked, I couldn't find no case law. I think that the Board of Appeals deserves to have a special counsel to work on their behalf, because the common counsel, I don't think is good enough because they've already made clear at the meetings that they seem to think that this, that they can even go for this accommodation. And I don't even believe that it really even has any merit myself, in my opinion, I'm not an attorney. But if there's a conflicting vote by that Board of Appeals, the original vote that was taken, that we all worked so hard for, democracy worked, deserves to be defended by special counsel. And I would fully expect that this board would make sure that that vote would be defended over any other vote.
Thank you. There anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Yes?
Can you just tell me about that February 11th? I'm just still not sure. Like, you guys have a meeting...
I'm just still not sure, like you guys have a meeting, is it a public meeting? Are we all here and you guys vote? Or is it you guys in behind closed doors?
No, what we'll do is we open up a regular meeting and we vote to go into executive session. And then we would go behind closed doors to discuss it. Yes, that's, that's why it's an executive session.
And then you come back out? Now, Veerman would go back in there with you guys in private?
And then we come back out into general session.
Veerman would go in with you though?
Yes, because he's, he's, has a right to defend himself.
I don't know enough about it, just what an hour ago. There's been a lot of surprises in this past year and a half, I just want to try to open the door to a few, you know.
Yes.
Is the executive session recorded? Do we know what's said in there as someone taking notes?
Yes, it's not, there is a.
And that's made public?
An executive, it's made public when it's, when the, when it's finished. Yeah, when it's, executive session minutes are made public.
Not to be a silly comment, but town council doesn't have any conflicting, any conflict of interest with this, right? Town council has nothing to do with any conflict?
Not that I'm aware of.
He's right there, he can answer it, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else before we go to a third try? Okay.
Why a third try?
One last time, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, just one of that.
So we get, continue.
Will you, Mr. Chairman, could the town attorney address?
None of those questions.
Will you be taking up a vote to go, to address my request or not?
Which request, Mr. Carr?
I requested the board to see if somebody would be willing to put forth a motion to have an agenda item to see if the town can discuss.
About approaching the developer or approaching to put in a, a station and houses and?
If the town would be willing to have an agenda item where there was a discussion to discuss the possibility of entering into a friendly negotiation with the developer to have him develop that site as an alternative development opposed to a detox center.
We can make that in consideration. I wouldn't put that as a, as a topic of an agenda, but I can direct the town manager to do that. And then at our next meeting, we can tell you what, what the results were if you'd like.
I just thought maybe we have a lot of people in town that are pretty brilliant that could offer input at a public hearing, ideas, proposals, encouragement to the town. If the Board of Selectmen saw a tremendous amount of people coming down and offering input where it would benefit the town, I think tonight might be a good meeting for one of you folks to put forth a motion to have the rest of the members vote on putting that as an agenda item. And quite honestly, Mr. Carr, listening to some of these folks here, where you set the agenda typically, and if there is a conflict of interest with your brother, having some type of relationship with the developer, my honest opinion is that you should probably recuse yourself from even taking a vote or making a motion on this request of mine and having the other three members that are present be the ones that put forth a motion for that agenda item. I think you would be in conflict of interest even having anything to do with it, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Joe Burns, nine Pinewood Road. I don't know if anybody, I got here late, I apologize. I don't know if anybody addressed the open mic at the, the zoning board of appeals meeting at the end of the meeting, which actually the meeting, I think, was still in session, where the town council, I believe it was his voice, said, "Don't worry, this will be overturned on the, on the accommodation thing." And then the chairman said, "Well, if they got a problem, let them take it up with George Bush." Because George Bush pushed the Americans with Disabilities Act through. Let them take it up with George Bush, he's dead. Twice he said that.
Yep.
And then after that, he said, "Oh, why don't we go over to Emerald Rocks for whiskeys?" I believe they were talking about taking the secretary out, because she's retiring, I believe. But it's just very unprofessional, it shows a certain, a certain bias against us, especially from the town council saying something like that.
Yep.
And the chairman.
Yep.
You might want to take a listen to it.
Okay. You, you're saying the town council said it?
It sounded like his voice, and then it sounded like the chairman's voice.
Hard to believe that the town council would say that.
Making remarks about a dead president.
Yeah, I, I, I will take a listen to it.
Well, you take, take a good listen to it.
I'd be surprised if the town council would say something like that.
Very closely afterwards, while everyone was milling around.
Was that that?
Is there someone else? I see another.
You can identify their voices if you listen to it three times.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Wood?
I'd like to know, when was the last case of the zoning board of appeals going to an accommodation vote?
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, we won't have that answer for you, right? You'll have to look that up.
I'm Kelly Richards, thirty-one Shady Lane Drive. To jump onto what Jeff was saying about when the last time the Board of Appeals went to an accommodation vote, I'm also wondering, is it always the lawyer who's representing the petitioner that determines that it'll be a majority vote? Or does the town set the standard for that? Maybe that was what Ethan was referring to. But, you know, who sets the standard for how the vote is going to be when typically the Board of Appeals, from my understanding, is just a majority vote?
I believe it's the, the bylaws, the law.
The bylaws will set.
It's statutory, Mr. Chairman.
Sketch or, okay.
Okay, and so when, for the reasonable accommodations, that is also set in our bylaws? Is that also set in our bylaws?
It's under, under state and federal law. It's not under the bylaws.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to follow up on that point then, because I think that a lot of municipalities do have some sort of written procedures and protocol, is that correct?
Some, you're asking if some do.
The board for town council, yeah.
I guess I would, what standard of protocol for what?
Yeah, I feel like the, the Board of Appeals is under-equipped, and I think that it's unfair to ask them to even try to, you know, read this state and federal statute and try to put that all together. And I think that that's why a lot of municipalities actually have a written procedure for it. And I guess the question is, do we have one?
Again, Mr. Chairman, it's governed by, by state law and under the town's bylaws. Zoning Boards of Appeals, that's their, that's their jurisdiction, both in Wilmington and every other community, and that's, it's governed by, by state law and, and by law. Those, those are the guidelines that are followed.
I mean, it feels like we're leaving them just hanging out there without any guidance. And I don't think it's fair to them, and I don't think it's fair to the people who are expecting to receive a high quality of results from them, because I just don't think that they have the tools necessary to do so. It's just, it's not, it's not, it shouldn't happen that way. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Want to get?
We're going to answer some of these questions?
Yep, yep.
Such as Jonathan's day?
Sort of keep him in there, just tell him that we're going to answer some of the questions.
Yeah, we can answer all those questions first.
Okay. Yes, Mr. McCoy?
Thanks, I'll start off. I've been waiting on the new business. A couple of good points with relative, under my new business, only has to deal with what's happened under public comments. I have no other new business, but I heard a few things and I would like to make some commentary. I hear Ms. Sullivan raised a point stating that there may be a member of the Board of Appeals who voted favorable in a special permit that may have had a financial interest with the applicant. I don't know if that's the case or not, but Jeff, we really need to find that out, because if that is the case, that's a no-no. And I'll say it in a nice way, I want to give everybody the benefit of doubt, but that bothers me. You know, maybe they individual did disclose it, I'm not aware of it, I haven't seen it before us, so that's number one. Number two, Mr. Riberio, he raised a really good point. A lot of, there's a little misunderstanding out there about a simple majority and a super majority. And it sounds like, and I did hear those comments about President Bush, and I'll be honest, I voted for President Bush, I didn't vote for Mike Dukakis, I'll say that. But the idea is that's really uncalled for, those comments, and that's here and they're there. But the point I want to make, I did a little research work, and it sounds like almost the applicant is saying, "Oh, no, we just got to come back late February, just get a simple majority and the thing's off and running." I did a little research work, and maybe through you, Mr. Chairman, to town council, we got to look at it. Number one, it was a three to two vote. Now, they can bring it back, any board, the Board of Appeals, Board of Selectmen, planning board, you always can get a vote for reconsideration. You need a simple majority to reconsider the vote. The only thing I can see of them getting a simple majority is to reconsider the vote. Now, for the special permit, I believe you still need a super majority, I'll state that. I'm, if I'm a betting man, I believe, what I looked at today, I believe I'm right. Now, I would assume that the applicant is looking at this. I tend to believe, and I want to ask you, Mr. Chairman, I believe the simple, it's a confusion. Everyone thinks they're going to come in, get three votes, and it's all done. I disagree with that notion. I believe, and Mr. Riberio brought up a good point, relative to the simple majority, the simple majority would be to reconsider the vote. You still believe, I still believe you need a, you need a super majority for the special permit. The only thing I can think of, by them gaining a support from one of the two members if they change the format of that building, because it doesn't meet that criteria of that area. You know, it is not harmonious. And it's, the pride building before it got demolished was a one-story building, it wasn't a two-story building. You see, that's what I think people are out there a little nervous, that they think they're going to come in February and right away to the magic wand, they only need three votes, and then they get the permit for the drug detox. I don't believe that's the case. I'm asking you, we need clarif, we need to clarify that, because there's a lot of confusion. You know, so through you, Mr. Chairman, if we could ask council if he's prepared enough to say something tonight, unless he has to say something later, and I'll say it again, I repeat myself, I truly believe that you do need a super majority relative to that special permit. A simple majority would be to reconsider the vote, and then I would assume the developer's going to have to say, "Well, for me to get the super majority, I'm going to have to change that configuration of that building." That's all I'm saying through you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that something you'd be prepared to talk about tonight, or you'd have to look into?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe this is a matter that's currently being reviewed. The issue is, there are a couple of things. There's, there's the issue of whether a special permit is required in order to make the, the reasonable accommodation. And I, some of the discussion I've heard about which vote counts, which one vote doesn't count, which vote is defended. Keep in mind that the only votes that is, that is defended is, is the vote that's, that's appealed. The, the town doesn't get to choose what is appealed by the applicant, so it all depends on whatever vote is, is appealed by, by the applicant. The town doesn't defend a vote that's not subject to appeal. So if, if, well, if a vote is not appealed, it's not, there's no, no basis for defense because it hasn't been challenged. With respect to whether it's super majority or a, a simple majority, the issue is whether a special permit is required, and that's what's being reviewed based upon what is going to be submitted by the applicant. So I caution, I'm, I'm not going to be giving legal advice and opinions on the application tonight, because, you know, that's a matter that is currently pending before the, the zoning board of appeals and could be the subject of litigation in the future. Certainly, I heard certain questions asked about the exposure of the town, liability, issues like that. I'm certainly not going to answer those questions, because again, those are matters of litigation and liability, which may at some point be discussed in the executive session, but certainly will not be discussed in an open session where, as has been indicated by a number of people, everything that's said tonight is, isn't open, these are the minutes in the process are open, it's not only you that would be listening, but also the applicant themselves. If we're discussing liability to town, I'm not going to give a roadmap for the other side to determine how to sue the town. So with all due respect to the questions, and I think they're, they were excellent questions, I just can't advise the town on legal strategy that, that would then be repeated to the applicant against who would be defending our decision. So I hope you understand that decision. But with respect to the, the issue of what the, the legal standard is in terms of a super majority, again, that's not a decision that's made by the applicant, the applicant doesn't decide the standard of vote by the, by the zoning board of appeals, that's statutory determining whether they, whether they, by, under bylaws, would require a special permit and what the standard would be for the, this so-called reasonable accommodation, and that's what's being reviewed currently and will be determined in advance of any action taken by the zoning board of appeals.
It's a special permit, the way I see it, you still need four votes.
Special per, a special permit requires a, a more than a super majority.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Tends to think that I'm correct.
But the, the issue is whether.
I understand, I get that.
If I may.
I'm sorry.
Just because I, I'm not disagreeing with you, sir. A, a special permit has a higher quantum of vote, the issue is whether a special permit is required for this so-called reasonable accommodation.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council.
Still have?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would like to, I know we're discussing under new business, I'd like to discuss the topic right now, and then at a later time when Mr. Eaton's back, and I have some other things under new business I'd like to speak to. I was a member of the Board of Appeals for fourteen years, and I do not remember any vote that I took for reasonable accommodations. I hope that answers some of your questions. So it's been at least fifteen, seventeen years, but I am going to ask the chairman to maybe dig a little further, I could have missed a meeting, but, so I certainly don't know that. I also certainly hope as a former member of the Board of Appeals, that town council definitely defends my vote. If I voted against this, I would want my vote defended as they have done in the past. I will also say that there were comments out in the audience that were not nice about town council, I think they do a great job, so.
Thanks, sir. If I can, Mr. Chairman, to this, to this point, obviously, anytime a, a vote is challenged, when I, when I say not defending a vote, if a vote is not challenged, then it stands and doesn't, doesn't require defense. It is, it is the vote and it, it remains unchallenged, and congratulations to you.
What I'm talking about, if you don't mind, is, Mr. Chairman, to the town council, is there was a comment out there, it was an excellent comment about the vote got defeated by three to two. If that's, if that is appealed by the applicant, you have to defend that vote.
We, through, through the, the board, which gives us direction, of course, we, we would, we would be charged with defending whatever the vote would be of, of the board. We certainly would not be taking a, a position adverse to the decision made by, by the board.
And just to clarify, Mr. McCoy, every special permit for the Board of Appeals is a four to one vote, for minimum, a super vote, every permit, if you want to put a pool on your property, or if you want to put a fence somewhere, if you want to put an addition, every special permit is a super majority vote, not just for a detox center. So, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I do ask that under new business, when Mr. Eaton's back, that I can further discuss some other subjects. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Bendel, did you want to?
I also have new business, but I want to make sure that we get a chance to answer some of the questions that were asked.
Yeah, I, I think that there was a question by Mr. West regarding the Roman House and that we've put in some needed repairs, yes, we did, we put in, I believe it was twenty-four thousand dollars worth of new roofing because there was a leak there. We're hoping not to put in too much money to that, to the Roman House. And yeah, there's, there's no talk yet of a new town hall, school admin building at this point in time. We're planning to have a facilities master plan meeting that would include the selectmen, the, the finance board, the committee itself, the school committee, sometime in February, I believe, or early March, so that we can discuss that whole plan as to where we're heading on that, that master plan. As for the inclusionary bylaw, you mentioned about Valerie, she's done a tremendous job with that. She was in here, as you mentioned, at our last meeting to discuss it, to get some input. I, but I don't believe that she was finished with putting it all together, and I believe that she was going to come back again. Is that what our understanding is?
Well, certainly in terms of the inclusionary bylaw, that was, that was in draft form, it will be finalized here shortly, so it can be placed on the town meeting warrant. I think there will be further discussion in terms of what else is in the toolbox, so to speak. She can certainly address that specifically, but I think, just to be clear, the inclusionary bylaw is not going to solve the problem of affordable housing. It will, when we get to a point where we're at ten percent, the inclusionary bylaw is really intended to keep us on pace with the percentage. The only way to get to ten percent or essentially to keep us on pace with the percentage. The only way to get to 10% or essentially to increase the percentage of affordable housing is to essentially increase the pace of affordable units more quickly than the number of market rate units that are going up. So, you know, whether that becomes an apartment building, you know, oftentimes that's discussed as one major prospect, because if there are affordable units in that apartment building, the whole building, all the units are counted for affordable.
Now, regards to Sherapa Farms, I believe that was a question asked. That's been in executive session, so we'd not be privy to bring up information in executive session at this time. As for myself and the accusations about conflict of interest, I have been in contact with town council. There doesn't, there is no conflict of interest, but I certainly will contact town council again tomorrow to make sure that there is none. And if there's a conflict of interest, I would recuse myself without a doubt. But at this time, I don't know that there is. So we'll, I'll look into that, and I will look into that a little bit more for you. I think that covers a number of the questions. And Ms. McDonnell will, I've already answered that question about talking to the developer, considering some alternatives. We'll have Mr. Howell, no, I said, in talking to the developer, we'll have Mr. Howell give a call to him to see if he would consider some other alternatives there. Is that it? Does anybody else have anything else? Okay, sure.
Run new business, by the way.
Okay, run the new business. Mr. Eaton, does anybody wish to talk further on new business?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number one, want to urge folks to attend next Monday. The manager's going to present his budget, so I look forward to seeing the budget presentation, which is an annual event taking place next Monday night here at 7:00. Last week, along with some of my colleagues, had the opportunity to attend the MMA meeting, Mass Municipal Association meeting, and we were able to attend, myself was able to attend several sessions, including topics that were covered, open meeting laws, public records requests, and laws for running an effective meeting. So it was a very good event and learned a lot, certainly. So I was grateful for the opportunity to go. Lastly, I do want to acknowledge a special somebody here tonight. We have someone who's worked for the town for a very long time, and I think does a great job. And so on behalf of my colleagues, we want to wish her a very special birthday this week and present her with a little gift. I know, it's my understanding that Beverly's turning 29 in a couple of days, and so we certainly want to thank you for all you do for the town and wish you a very happy birthday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Eaton?
Just very briefly, Bev, happy birthday. And also, I was also at the MMA annual meeting, I guess a week and a half ago. And one of the presentations I sat through was the plastic bag bans that we have coming into effect in early May. And there were another, other communities, it's approximately a quarter of the communities in the state that either have them that are already effective or will be effective very shortly. One of the takeaways that I had from that was that publicity is paramount. I don't want anybody showing up to a store expecting that everything's going to be the same. And a lot of the larger retailers, Target, grocery stores, things like that, they'll have paper bags that are available. But it is, I think, very important that we do communicate. So talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, talk to the other people that you see, and make sure that they start getting ready. I know a couple of community organizations are going to be, I think, selling the reusable bags, but, you know, change is always difficult, no matter how small it is, but I think getting everybody on board will help ease that transition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple announcements. One of them is, every meeting I get to shout out to a veteran. Mr. Major Rob Alavere is a US Air Force retired, volunteers on the Commission on Disabilities, helps out at all events and ceremonies. The next announcement I'm going to read, because it's a personal announcement.
Mr. Love, before you add that, I don't know what it is. It's a personal announcement. Maybe I'll do my new business first, if that's okay. You know, I'm not a Facebook person. I'm not on Facebook. I don't do Twitter and stuff. I can answer the phone and maybe look at a text. But I do receive information about things that happen on Facebook. And there is some misinformation out there. I believe that there's been circulating the fact that the volunteer members of the Board of Selectmen get salary. That, you are misinformed. We have two former selectmen out in the audience as well. Members of the Board of Selectmen do not get a salary. They do not get a salary, just so you know that. We get a $250 stipend, I believe around September or so, for travel. So just, that's been flying around out there. My wife is wondering where my salary is, and no, we don't, we do not get a salary.
Mr. Chairman, I might add that some members opt not to take the $250 like myself. So I just want to put that out there.
I also do not take it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I donate my salary to the veterans for the wall of the special, so there's three of us that don't take that salary at all on this board.
Thank you. And the other thing that, quite frankly, is becoming almost slanderous in some respects, and it's downright untrue, I hate to use the word lie, but it's accusing members of the board having a kitchen done, getting a new car.
So glad you brought that up.
What else was it? Kitchen, a car, and scholarships. My son, he's served in Afghanistan, and he's done with college. My daughter, she has a job, and she's done with college. But they don't need scholarships. But to send out, you know, accusing us of putting our hands in the pockets of developers so that we can get kitchens and cars and scholarships is absolutely ridiculous. It's uncalled for, and I tend not to speak on behalf of my colleagues. They can speak for themselves, but I would speak on behalf of my colleagues at this time and say that it's just a wrong, wrong thing. And people read those Facebook comments, and believe it or not, they believe them. And it's time to stop that stuff. So I wish who's ever out there spreading these rumors would stop doing that. It's just inappropriate, uncalled for, and shameful on your part for doing it. The gentlemen up here are all volunteers. We work hard. We hope we do our best on behalf of the town. So that just, just wish it would stop.
Yes, can I say, I appreciate you bringing that up. Funny enough, I get brought up saying, I'm going to get a kitchen today, and this individual brought my wife into the mix. You know, so without me going into detail, believe me, I'm the last guy that any builder wants to give me anything. All right, I'll say that. But I agree with what he's saying, all right? But that's out there, and it's personal, and this individual knows who this individual is. In fact, this individual put a post on a community page saying how wonderful everyone is, but yet this individual accusing some of the members of this exact same thing. And this individual on the community page is not allowing comments. And I'm sure she's home seeing it right now, and shame on you, who put that out there. You speak with forked tongue. You say one thing, and you do another. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Love?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to do this tonight. It's not an easy decision, but I have to announce my resignation from the Board of Selectmen effective after the February 11th meeting. I was offered a position by a company located in Maryland that I simply could not refuse. This position will require me to spend a great deal out of Wilmington, a great deal of time out of Wilmington, but I will continue to make Wilmington my home. I'll be spending some weekends, holidays, and family events here in town. I still plan on being a Wilmington resident and a Wilmington voter. I love this town, and I expect to be at town meeting. Technically, I could serve as a selectman, but personally, I don't think it's right to hold on to the seat without being totally accessible to the residents all week long, which I am and have been. It's just not the way I do things. It simply is not. This was a tough decision, but when I ran for selectman, I never could have predicted unemployment would come along, especially in Maryland. Even though I will miss serving the residents of Wilmington, I am excited from how wonderful this new position will be for my family. I understand that I could have waited until February 11th to make this announcement, but I wanted to be fair to the residents of Wilmington and to anyone that might be interested in filling this seat. I intend to participate fully in matters before the board until I deliver my formal resignation to the town. At that time, I will formally acknowledge my colleagues on the board and appropriately thank the residents of Wilmington for the opportunity to serve. That's all I have to say. It is an emotional decision, and it's been a great two years. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think we're just, without letting it go by, obviously, I think that goes without saying that we respect your decision and certainly wish you well.
Thank you.
And really thank you for your service.
This was a job that came to me, and it's an opportunity that I simply could not pass. My wife and my kids will still be here. My mother-in-law, my house, I'll still own it. And I still plan on, like I said, voting and being at town meeting. I've already put it on my calendar to be here for that, so I don't mess it up. So.
You will be listed on the board, that's for sure.
Yeah, and I plan on saying more to the board on February 11th, so thank you.
Yes, could I just say, yeah, I'm sure we're going to be talking in the next week, but I'm in total shock. I never expected this at all. And I can honestly say that I think you've done an outstanding job as a selectman. And one thing about you as an individual, you do care about folks in this community. You're another one who does care about these residents.
I think everyone up here does, Mike, including Beverly and Jeff.
Yep, no, I'm not saying that's not the case, but hey, the light's on you, my friend.
I appreciate, I really appreciate. I did want to save some of that time for the next meeting.
And I do agree, everyone does care up here.
I do want to say, when the negotiations for the job started, I informed the chairman right away, and his knees buckled when I told him. So, and I felt bad, because he has bad knees. But, but I think I shocked him too, Mike. So I've learned a lot from all four, five of you people and Bev in the two-plus years. It's been great, and I will say more on February 11th, because I owe the people of Wilmington who have supported me a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howell, important dates?
Yes, we had the, February 1st is the last date to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion on the annual town meeting on May 4th. February 4th, development of strategic plan for Wilmington Public Schools Community Meeting, Wilmington Senior Center, 1:30 a.m. February 4th, next Board of Selectmen's meeting, that is the budget presentation here in Room 9 at 7:00 p.m. February 5th, the first finance committee meeting of the season to review the budget. We'll be talking about the revenue and general government accounts. That meeting is at 7:00 p.m. February 6th, development strategy, strategic plan for Wilmington Public Schools Community Meeting, Wilmington High School, 6:30 p.m. Another finance committee meeting on February 7th, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. Planning and Conservation, Building Inspector, and Board of Appeals, Budget Recreation Department. February 9th, the Development Strategic Plan for Wilmington Public Schools Community Meeting, Wilmington's High School, 9:00 a.m. February 9th, Congressman Seth Moulton will be coming to Wilmington. The location is still somewhat in flux. It'll either be here at the town hall or at the high school in the auditorium. February 10th, dedication of the Joanne Benton Auditorium, 2:00 p.m., Wilmington High School. Then just a reminder that the plastic ban, plastic bag ban takes effect on May 5th.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second.
Mr. Love, same with Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous, and good night.